Of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy, could you take roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Heather Logan?
Present.
Rob Toyer?
Here.
Debra Nelson?
Here.
Michelle Blythe?
Here.
Yvonne Giardot Van Ornum?
Here.
Leisha Nobach?
Here.
Jan Schweddy?
Present.
Move for approval of the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Okay, we'll start off our workshop tonight with the presentation. I have a presentation for Kristin Garcia. Today, we recognize and thank Kristin Garcia for 10 years of dedicated service to the city of Arlington. Under her leadership, the city has earned 10 clean audits from the state auditor's office. A reflection, a reflection of Kristin's leadership and integrity. In 2024, she guided the finance team to earn a state auditor stewardship award, an unprecedented honor. Congrats, thank you. Kristin has served on regional boards, managed $5.7 million in ARPA funding with clean federal audits, and has been a mentor and a leader to her team. She's known for her open-door policy, quick humor, and leadership style that has made her department better. Outside of work, she's a proud new grandma, an avid Seahawks and Buffalo Bills supporter, a Def Leppard fan, and someone who values time with her family. Kristin is leaving behind a valuable impact on the finance department, and she's leaving some very big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Oh, thanks so much. Don't want to cry.
Yes, you still have your report. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is the May financial report. Kristin?
Right, well, thank you so much. That was very unexpected. I'm going to try not to cry, so I just want to say I've been very blessed to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity. And it's just been amazing to work with all of you and the team, and just thank you. I'm very honored.
Thank you. And the door's still open if you want to stay.
All right, so I'll try to get through this. All right, debre- debre- so through the month of May, our sales tax is up 4% for the year. Our retail gained a little bit, but retail is still lagging behind by about 1%, but it's going the right direction. Construction services, wholesale, and information industries is where the growth is coming from right now. I do want you to keep in mind that even though our revenue is up 4% from this time last year, our long-term financial plans have been projecting a 6% growth year over year. So we're actually still behind from where we need to be, and we're about 5% under budget. So we're close, but we're still, even though we're up, we're still behind. On a positive note, our other major revenue in the general fund is either stable or growing, and expenses are being managed within budget or below budget, so that's good. What I want to talk about kind of for future thinking in our next biennium, I want to talk about our general fund. So our general fund's ending fund balance right now appears healthy. It's about 7.4 million. So right now, we're meeting our required reserves. We have a little bit in excess of that amount, but that will likely be used to offset what we're behind in our sales tax. So we have a little bit of cushion right now, so we're not having to dip into our reserves. So that's one point I want to make. Thinking ahead in the future, if we look at where our ending fund balance has been, 23, 24, and 25, even though we're meeting our reserves and we have a little bit of cushion, it's still declining. Our 10-year financial plans did indicate that it would decline, but at the point where we're getting to 2027, 2030, that's where we need to start thinking about some action either on the revenue side or the expense side in terms of our long-term sustainability. So that's kind of the takeaway that I want to leave, that we need to make sure we're looking at our ending fund balance in relation to where our sales tax is right now, because our sales tax is underperforming in comparison to our 10-year financial plans. So combination is important. The streets fund also should continue to be monitored. Our fund balance right now is historically lower than it has been. It's less than one month of operating expenses, and the fuel tax is currently trending downward. Even though we will have increased gas tax, that will likely just kind of offset where we're trending downward right now. So at least at this point, I don't see that we're going to have newer additional revenue for right now. Two other points I just want to make really quick. The audit of the city's 2024 financial statements has begun. They're trying to get that done quickly before my exit. So we're trying really hard. The mayor and mayor pro tem did meet last week with the auditors as part of the initial preliminary procedures. They always do a risk assessment. That's typically been the mayor and the mayor pro tem, so they've got through that process. And once they schedule an entrance conference, then the whole council will be notified, and then all of you will be able to participate in that process. And the last item I wanted to note, I did make a typo in the narrative in relation to the lodging tax. I noted that the budget for '26 to be awarded was 170, 175,000. It was actually 185, so we got a little bit more. So I meet with the lodging tax committee next Monday on June 30th, and we'll get that work done and plan to bring a recommendation to you on July 7th. For '26.
'26.
Yes, for grant period '26, yes. And then contracts will go out sometime shortly after that, so all the grantees will be notified and can start planning their events for next year.
Any questions? Done seeing.
All right. All right, well, thank you again. I wasn't expecting that, but very much appreciated, and I'm very honored to have been here. So thank you so much.
Yeah, the no questions part is because you're so thorough.
I do have a question for Paul.
Somebody's going to have hard shoes to fill on that one.
Well, and that's part of my question for Paul, because Kristin has built this report, so it's so thorough and so much good information compared, we never used to get this much information before Kristin. So I would encourage whoever is hired in the coming weeks to make sure that this type of a format of reporting continues, because it's night and day difference for us as council, I think, with information and being able to make good decisions. So I encourage you to look for that source of communication.
I think we did make that.
Yeah, it's so good.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item, the community engagement quarterly report. Sarah?
Good evening, mayor and council members. So to start out with, I highlighted our current and new projects at the top of the report. We started our music in the park series. Saturday was our second band. There was about 200 people there, a really good turnout and good music. That's sponsored by the tourism grant. We're right in the midst of July 4th planning. It's all set. There are a couple changes this year. There's no beer garden at Howler Park. They weren't able to get their permit in on time this year. The Qantas are no longer having their auction, but the kids closet has stepped up, and they're going to have an auction, a silent auction at the park. We're in the process of getting a new electronic reader board for the downtown billboard by the merchants parking lot. The electronic reader board will be able to program digital messaging remotely and also use it for emergency communications. We have to do a change in the sign code, so that will be coming forward in July. Yep. So that's exciting. And the street fair booth, July 11th through 13th, the city will have a booth as usual, and the signup sheet is on SharePoint if you all would like to sign up for a slot or two for the street fair. And if you have any information you want particularly shared, let me know. We are in the process of acquiring a new online registration program for our city facilities to help with scheduling ballfields, picnic shelters, the pop-up shop, and any other type of facilities. It's going to help collect payment and make it easier than what we have now. We're using the city website, but it's not built for recreation programming. We did the commute trip reduction plan, which we approved last week. We turned in some tourism grant applications similar to last year, except we added one concert a month at Smokey Point Park for next year. So we'll see if we get that. We applied for a PUD tree power grant. This is the same grant that we did last year to add trees to Centennial Trail. Last year, we did from third to fourth block, and now we're going to continue on from fourth to division, add more trees.
Excuse me, have you noticed that there's one that died?
Yeah, I have.
Will it be replaced?
Possibly next year. It's too late in the season to replace it.
Thank you.
We are excited because Fox 13 reached out to us and wants to highlight Arlington and their zip trips. So they'll be here on August 8th filming in Legion Park from 9:00 to 10:00 in the morning, and then they'll play that on their Fox 13 channel. And then we also, we received county grant funding to pay for a slot on Seattle Refine. So they'll be here in August filming downtown in the Centennial Trail, so we'll be featured on Como's Seattle Refine. New this year with National Night Out, we're going to have a community barbecue with the police department. We're in the midst of the public art projects. On Wednesday, we will be installing the Love One sculpture from the Arlington Cavalry project on the Centennial Trail by the depot. And Lori Angdahl is working on the Howler mural down on Highway 9 under the overpass. And then we're also, in July, we'll be working on the Sundial project down at the Stormwater Whiteland Park.
Question?
Yeah.
Today, I was doing a walkthrough with Jim on Division, and I noticed the poor eagles are looking pretty sad. Are they going to be restained or painted?
So with the Division project, we're doing two new public art sculptures with wood. They're being created this summer.
Okay.
By Steve Backus, who presents the chainsaw carving show.
So they'll be replaced?
Those two will be retired, but Steve's going to take those two and refinish them so we can use them in other locations.
Thank you. You might want to let Jim know that.
He knows.
Oh, he pretended.
He could have forgot, but he knows.
He probably forgot.
We're getting new foundations placed in the centers for the new art.
That'll be great.
They're eagles and fish. The Jensen Park project, we are ordering the restrooms, so they've been ordered, and then we're going to work on going out to bid on those. The pickleball project is still with engineering. Jim said that should be done in June, so we'll see. And then a couple new things, we're going to have a grand opening for 211th Street on Saturday at noon. We're also partnering with the Chamber for Night Markets on the Fourth Friday of the month at the Innovation Center. There was some interest in doing the Fourth Fridays with our art walk and bringing people in town on a Friday night for the merchants.
And will that be through the summer?
Through the summer. And then the local fire departments are going to have a water safety event at Howler Park on July 1st from 12:00 to 5:00, and the tribe is giving away life jackets with that event, and they're doing demonstrations. So that should be a good event for the public. And then just some, that's the main things that we're working on, but the rest of the report are kind of updates. Mandy's our PIO, and she also works with the county on the SMART team. She's closing, they're closing up a couple investigations, which are noted in here. Our weekly e-newsletter, there's about 1,500 opens weekly. Then the next page, you can see the top website clicks, which is generally the same with utility billing, police, the airport, community events, the agendas, community development projects. And then in June, you'll notice that Howler Park was one of the main hits, and that's due to the splash pad. And the next page, our Facebook page, there's about 14,000 followers. The top posts were about the Smokey Point Park and the splash pad. The videos of the meetings, council meetings, and planning commission, they're averaging about 50 to 60 views per week. Let's see. Meet Me in Arlington is still going strong. The page is updated, and we'll be producing more videos to go along with that. The pop-up shop calendar is online, where businesses can sign up to use the Innovation Center. Diane with the Chamber is still scheduling classes for businesses that the city is sponsoring. The youth council is done for the summer. We had a final project at Howler Middle School with them, and they did a really good job presenting nutrition to teens. And then they also came to Friday Fun Day and did a healthy presentation for them with healthier snacks. Instead of soda, they had sparkling water and fruit. Let's see, what else? We've had a lot of volunteers this season, quite a few. They're listed out here. And with the park projects, our park commission will be touring the parks tomorrow evening, so we'll have a report from that. We have two Eagle Scout projects that are working on getting their projects reviewed and approved, and then they'll be working on their projects. We covered the public art and events in the Fourth of July, so I'm happy to answer your questions.
Debra? Yeah.
Okay. I sent Sarah pictures when we were in Page, Arizona. They had, it was in a neighborhood, and it was in the middle of the block, a park that was a fitness park. And it was just grass, but then it had all these fitness machines. Of course, granted, that's Arizona. They don't get the rain like we do. But I was thinking that that might be something for park, because I know they've talked about it for years. But to combine with the planning commission for like East Hill as it develops, because it's getting so close to being developed, that that would be a nice area to build something like that possibly. So just throwing that out there as I was visiting other cities and seeing what their infrastructure was like for parks and fitness, so, and where we could maybe do something where it's going to be new. So anyway, just a thought. Thank you.
Heather?
Thank you, Mayor Panny. I am delighted at the 477,000 views for our Smokey Point opening. Good job, comms team, and great to know the community was, is so invested. That's wonderful news.
Yeah, they're very happy.
Any others? No other questions? Thank you, Sarah.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, Airport Quarterly Report. Marty?
Good evening, mayor, council members. We've been busy at the airport. We're well in our taxiway Alpha project. That's, we have about 56 days remaining. That's an estimated project cost of $5.34 million. That's funded 90% by FAA. We identified, we had to make a change order, and we brought that to you here recently. And that, that change order is also going to be paid by the FAA up to 90%. We found a sewer line and a water line that we didn't quite know was where it was, so we had to relocate it, and we're in the process of doing that now. So that's where we're at with the project. It's going well. And then we're doing the off, the airport fiber installation project. We're in phase three of that. And that began, this phase began May 27th, to continue installation fiber along the east side of the airport. Digital fiber will be installed on Airport Boulevard in the northwest area of airport property. This will help us with security, gate access, and most importantly, the ability to have fiber there for businesses that want to, as we develop. So that's, that's an ongoing project. That's $599,000, nearly $600,000. We're teaming with IT on that expenditure. We're in, well into the master plan and obstruction survey with the FAA. This is a project that gets done about every 12 years or so. And that's planning for the long-term future of the airport, what it looks like, the development. We will be having on the 24th, I guess that's tomorrow, we're going to be having our, our second public advisory committee, our PAC committee, that we have users and, and tenants of the airport are part of that. That, that cost is $834,000. Again, that's an FAA-funded project. We're, we've been working hard to remove derelict aircraft from the airport property. This is a problem that all airports have. They get these aircraft, and it's been, we've kind of found a way to get, get rid of them quicker now than we did. Where they'll sit there forever, and there's ownership issues you can't make contact with. So we're, we'll probably have them gone within 30 days. So, yeah. We're settling some delinquent accounts. We're in pretty good shape there. We, we just conducted our hangar cleanout. We did some annual event that, from June 3rd to the 15th, where we provide dumpsters for our tenants and users to bring, get stuff out of the, out of the hangars. That's, that's a good thing, because then it's a fire hazard and safety hazard. And so that always goes real well. So we're done with that. The hometown fly-in is gaining momentum, and we just had a meeting today. We have about, I want to say about 50 people signed up, so that, we're expecting about 100 aircraft. And we, we teamed with some of the businesses. Ellie's is, is working with, we're going to have a beer garden there, and we have live band and some other stuff going on. And we just, we're working out, it's called a flower bomb drop, where they have a competition to see how close they can get to the X by dropping a bag of flour out of an airplane. It's fun. It's kind of an old-timey thing. So we're going to, we're going to do that. Yeah, so it's, we're very excited about where it's going. This is our first one, so we don't know what to expect. We're kind of hoping it's a little, on the small side, you know, careful what you wish for, so, yeah. The, we are continuing west side cleanup, ongoing effort to ensure standards are met over the airfield and operations staff. And M&amp;O has been working hard with us to remove a lot of debris over there. We, we removed 240 cubic yards of debris from, from the west side, and 23 barrels of hazardous waste that we've gotten rid of. We also removed non-aviation businesses that were, looked, appeared to be used for residential use, so, and we're replacing them with an aviation-related business. They work with the NTSB. In fact, they, they have a jet that they just moved in this last weekend that had crashed down in Coos Bay. And so they, they have it in the, in that building now. So we, we started the lease a little early, but July 1st is their official date, and, and that's, they're going to be helping us with the derelict aircraft. They were very excited to see those, and they're anxious to take them and cut them up and sell them, so, yeah. It's worked out really well. There's four new leases coming up by winter. Actually, it's more than that, but just kind of the highlight, they're going to be, I mentioned the NTSB group and the, let's see. We've got aircraft manufacturers. Basically, it's Vashon Aircraft that currently operates out there, but they're going to be building a larger facility, and that, that's going to be getting here soon. We've got an avionics supplier and installer that's going to be building a new facility, and they will also be doing maintenance for more likely corporate aircraft, jets and that sort of thing. We don't have that really right now to speak of, so this will be a nice additional thing that should draw additional business. Finally, we'll bring new hangars. We're working with one of our long-term hangar owners on the airfield to build four more additional rows of hangars. Yeah, so there's that, and that's beginning right away. So there, he's working with CED, and so we'll have all that stuff. And then SmartCap will be entering into an agreement with them to continue on their, their, their building process. So that, that was kind of stalled out for a while, but that's moving again, so we're excited about that. Any questions?
Any questions? Debra? Any questions? Deborah?
I'm just curious if there was a tenant that, Dwayne, that there was problems with for years, and I haven't heard anything as of late, did that ever all get settled out?
Yeah, that, he's, gosh, what can I say?
It's a topic for executives.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I kinda thought I might be pushing it.
But, yeah, that's been resolved, and the gentleman that's going to build, his name's Russ Kies, and he's been a tenant of the airfield for over 30 years.
Okay.
And he owns most of the north end, kinda those tan-colored hangars.
Okay.
Those are his buildings, and he's very well-known, very well-respected, so it's gonna be a nice operation, yeah.
Michelle?
I'll arrange, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'll arrange for executive session before the council break.
Happy to be here.
So that we can just do an update on pending litigations, and we haven't done that in a while, so apologies.
No, I'm just curious, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
So, I think it was under West Side Cleanup where you said that, you said "we" removed hazardous, and I guess, just a bunch of stuff that had accumulated?
Yeah.
Was that, did that belong to individuals, and they just neglected to do it?
Yeah, when, for lack of a better term, they were asked to leave, evicted, they were given an extended amount of time to remove stuff, and then, we just kinda ran out of time. And so, they removed quite a bit of stuff, but that's what was left.
So, good, then, you went in, were proactive, and made it, and cleaned it up?
We've been trying to work on this for quite a while, so this is almost a year of trying to, you know, get things sorted out there, but, yeah, so, the leftover debris, we picked it up and made it more usable for that, you know, the businesses in there now.
And were the people that were evicted, were they be built for all this? 'Cause I imagine that wasn't a cheap process.
We're working with legal at that to try to determine where that, where those costs need to be absorbed, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I want to point out real quickly on the pictures here, we've done some creative fertilizing of the field. That's about five acres right there, so, yeah, it's huge. It's between Bravo, which is the big, long runway, and our Windsock, yeah.
Thank you, Marty. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, Maintenance and Operation Quarterly Report. Josh?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So, go through staffing real quick, and then, go through different things we have in the report. Of our 14 staff, we have all 14 positions fulfilled full-time. We have three that are finally coming back to working full-time or coming back from paternity leave, which is great. It's been definitely a challenge the last couple of months with three, 14 out. All our seasonal positions are now filled for the summer season, and then, we'll have two positions in the fall, we'll run through for six months from this fall till next spring, which we did last year, and was really helpful. We have really good seasonal staff this year, we're really impressed with them, and a lot of hard-working young individuals. For DOC crews, they've been smaller groups, they come two days a week, they've been smaller crews, which I'm not sure why, but we've asked for additional crews from Monroe, and they're gonna be actually adding five to six more days within the next two months to help us out through the summer months, so, that'll be good. The crews have been reliable workers, though, and they have been coming on time. We had a couple of years of a lot of sick calls, so, it's good. With the additional crews, we'll be having them assist with, working with, like, Highway 9 traffic circle cleanup, and the medians, and a few other areas of parks, just getting them ready to the difficult areas, they are hard to maintain for streets. As you can see, we completed a lot of the cleanup on 172nd, it was getting pretty thick there, because we kinda delayed it just because it's such a dangerous area to work in, so our staff came in around 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, and we flagged it and shut down whole lane, and it took roughly five hours to complete. It was definitely a difficult task, but it was a good test for us for the future development of 172nd to see how we design that and how we can maybe go forward there. Let's see, the roadside mowing, we completed in May, there's landscaping and vegetation's growing, and we also did an emergency road closure for Burned Hill Road in May. I did it in May, maybe you've seen that on social media, it was definitely unexpected. We knew it was coming eventually, but, yeah, that large tree that fell down, and then, we actually called for a contractor to come in, remove another one that was hanging on the edge, too, so hopefully, we're good for a couple of years on Burn Road, as we're hoping.
I take it those trees are on our roadway?
Yes, yes, and we worked with the property owner of the hillside and brought him into the conversation to get permission to cut the one that was hanging on the edge. Yes, and then, in June, worked a lot with King Thompson Bridge area, the landscape, and are you seeing the vegetation pushback? We worked a lot with Wash Dot to figure out the right-ofways, 'cause our right-ofway is only a few feet in past the guardrail, and then, it turns into Wash Dot, and there's a little bit of confusion sometimes in that area, so, we're working with Wash Dot now to push it back real hard this year, so hopefully, give us some time. Let's see, in facilities, we've been working with our contract for Hermanson, who's been good to help us identify problems with our HVAC. In May, we did their annual fire extinguisher inspection, and then, moving on to our fire panel inspections. We also have, for facilities, we have our new HVAC going in on the top of City Hall roof, that we're just waiting for the equipment that's been ordered, and that'll give us quite a few years then. And parks, we've obviously de-winterized in the spring, irrigation turned on, everything's in full-growth mode right now, so we're going, like a going concern right now. Splash pad, we passed inspection with the Health District with Snowmush County, and it's been going really well, Splash pad has this year. We also added additional four of the parklit tables that were remaining with the umbrellas down there, 'cause that was a big, huge citizen request, was adding more shades, so we added four tables with umbrellas down there. They've been there for almost 30 days with no ventilation, so, we'll go with that. Yeah, in June, obviously, we had, we're working on our landscape prep for July 4th, so you'll see our team working a lot downtown right now, and Splash pad, obviously, was open, and Smokey Point Park is open. Smokey Point has been very positive environment, not too much negative stuff going on at night, there's a lot of movement at night, so we'll be adding, which is kinda unexpected, but we'll be adding a lot of lighting to the park area, where the park toys are, what we're kinda at right now, so hopefully, at least with the lights, maybe we can ensure a little more safety, while still ensuring that the lights aren't shooting at the neighborhoods and stuff like that. First, the Splash pad park, next year, just to put on your radar, we'll be adding or replacing a lot of the Splash pad toys, they're getting to the end of life on a few of them, the rubber toys, so we're working towards that. We also added a new carousel, as you can see up in the Glen Eagle Park, at Wedgewood Park. That was a toy that we were hoping would last a little longer, but the toy had failed, it used to be an HOA park, and the toy was not definitely to city standards, and it was falling apart and becoming a safety hazard, so we replaced it with a carousel that we had as a spare. For the airport, we had a large cleanup of a legal camp that we found. Airport staff actually using their drone located that camp, which worked out really well, they're using their drone and locating any camps that might be out there, and then, we coordinate with the police department to make sure all the posts and signage is proper there. Luckily, there was no people still left behind when we removed the camp. We also helped out with the airport with all the removal of the ultralight hangars and that area on the west side, and we're still moving towards that to get it all finalized. For the large-scale projects, City Hall, like I mentioned, getting a new HVAC system. We also had the roof cleaned by our staff, and we had new coating put on that has a 20-year warranty by S&amp;S, so, our City Hall building is looking really nice on top of the roof and with everything up there, yeah, and new gutters also. For our MNO shopper model, it's a large project that we're undertaking. We have, the roof actually started being replaced last week, and there have a few finishing items on that. It looks very nice, because they're replacing all the fascia and the soft that's underneath, and then, we'll be moving towards getting it painted this summer, we have a contract already in place, we're just having to decide what colors we wanna paint it, so, if you have any ideas, we're open to it. We're actually building, finishing up building the salt-sand bays, which are quite large, they're finishing up the roofing on that, and then, that'll allow us to hold two years of salt and sand versus, right now, we're only able to hold capacity of about one year. Let's see, what else? The York Park, the shed building is down, that was good. The fencing contractor, we had to switch fencing contractors, 'cause the original one didn't work out, so we're working out the new fencing contract, get that completed in the next week or so, and then, we'll hopefully get the next steps of the dog park going.
Good.
Yeah. For requests, our requests have been on track for, consistent with our normal years in the past. So far, we have 304 internal staff work orders, and those could be everything from furniture moves to a door not latching right, and everything in between. For external requests, we are on track for the year, as the years past have been looking. In June, we only have 10 noted here, but that's 'cause I wrote this a week and a half ago. This time of year, we have a lot coming in for vegetation and stuff, and we work a lot with code enforcement to identify the ones that are ours versus property or business owners, 'cause sometimes, there's a misperception, so if you ever have any, please ask us, it's fine, we'll work with them and identify if it's ours and take care of it if needed. So, I have any questions?
Any other questions? Michelle?
It's a pleasure to have you here.
Oh, thank you.
Love hearing from MNO and what you're doing, because we don't know if you don't come, you know, tell us, so thank you for that. And then, I mentioned it at another meeting, but thank you so much for the time you gave Rob and I when we did a tour and were educated by you on all the work you do and the hours that you put in, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Paul, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just a reminder, next week's the 5th Monday, so no meeting next week, we come back on July 7th, so you get a little bit of a break before the holiday. This was all information tonight, I have a few items coming forward on the 7th, so we will have some new business to work on.
And I will be out the rest of this week, I'll be in Kennewick at the AWC conference, so hopefully, pick up some new information and see what the other cities are doing that might help us, and, yeah, there's some, I wanna get to one, one of the seminars they're talking about is gonna be the, again, they're talking more of the tax increment finance thing, areas, so I'm interested to see what some of the cities are doing there and how that's working for them. Any comments or reports from council members?
Deborah?
I just wanna give a little report as a grandparent who sat at Smokey Point Park for a couple of days last week with my grandkids, and it was great. It was, it was great to see how all the kids of all ages and sizes were using the different toys, and I thought, oh, maybe the Zip Line one was gonna be, like, push and shove to get onto it, but they were lining up both days and taking tours, and then, the Little Merry Go Round, that's the ADA one, everybody was having great fun on it, I saw somebody in a wheelchair on it, and the other kids were pushing and having a ball, and so, I sat there both times for about an hour and a half, my kids were just totally worn out, and also, the facilities were clean. I went in with one of my kiddos, and toilet paper was low, and I thought, oh, okay, maybe I'll call someone or something. Within 10 minutes, the MNO person was there, going through the facility, restocking everything, and it was all clean, so, and people were in the lawn enjoying it, on the tables enjoying it, so, well done, city and everybody who worked on that, so.
Yeah, no, I've heard nothing but praise and comments, positive comments about the toys, that they're totally impressed with the toys that are in there.
Yeah, I saw nobody falling, you know, 'cause some of them are kinda up there high and stuff, and, like I said, different ages, and they just, I think they're really safe-looking toys, and it's so nice to not have wood chips and dealing with slivers, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any others? Okay, none seen. Do we have anybody for public comment? None seen. Okay, we'll move on. Consent agenda, I don't see nothing really there, so, I think we're good to go there, so. No executive session, so adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.